Hang on, we're muted.
Yes, sir, we hear you.
Good.
All systems go.
All right, we're gonna go back and mute our mics for a moment, so.
The pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Benoit.
Here.
Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Commissioner Pop is absent this morning because of an illness.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here, virtually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Benton County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can see and hear you. The county board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings. Please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off the cell phones or turn them off to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum.
No one was signed up.
Nobody? Okay, great, we'll move on. Consent agenda items, what would you like to do with 1 through 11?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of items 1 through 6 and 8 through 11.
So.
I'd like to pull number 7, please.
Pull 7 and I'll pull 10.
Mr. Chair, we probably should all pull number 4 for a correction.
Okay.
We have a correction on.
Change my motion to pull 4, 7, and 10.
Or 7 and 10, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
We best do that by roll call, sir.
Correct, thank you, I'm sorry about that. Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you. Number 4, Monty.
Sure, yes, so on the table where it lists the outside agencies, the historical society is listed as 50,000,070. That should be 15,000,070. That would be our correction, sir.
Okay.
Move for approval of consent agenda item number 4 with a correction as noted.
Second, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
We got a roll call again?
Oh, roll call, sorry.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number 7.
All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. Christine, in regards to the application for 3-2 malt beverage license, I just need some clarification. To me malt liquor is stronger than 3-2. So I'm wondering why the application wouldn't just be for wine and strong beer?
Because there is no strong beer license. In the state's eyes, in order to make a strong beer license, you have to have a wine applica- a wine license from the county and a 3-2 license from the county. And together, those make a strong beer license in the state's eyes.
Interesting. So the wine application that's also on our dais, will that count then? Will that create a strong license?
No.
Okay, it'll just be for wine and just 3-2?
Well, it's, it's, having both of them creates a strong beer license. So they have their farm winery license, which is separate through the state. Then in order for them to serve strong beer through the county and the state, they need to have that wine application and the 3-2.
Okay. All right, makes sense, I guess. All right.
There's mud, right?
Yeah, there you go. I'll move for approval of item number 7.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number 7.
All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. Christine, in regards to the application for 3-2 malt beverage license, I just need some clarification. To me malt liquor is stronger than 3-2. So I'm wondering why the application wouldn't just be for wine and strong beer?
Because there is no strong beer license. In the state's eyes, in order to make a strong beer license, you have to have a wine applica- a wine license from the county and a 3-2 license from the county. And together, those make a strong beer license in the state's eyes.
Interesting. So the wine application that's also on our dais, will that count then? Will that create a strong license?
No.
Okay, it'll just be for wine and just 3-2?
Well, it's, it's, having both of them creates a strong beer license. So they have their farm winery license, which is separate through the state. Then in order for them to serve strong beer through the county and the state, they need to have that wine application and the 3-2.
Okay. All right, makes sense, I guess. All right.
There's mud, right?
Yeah, there you go. I'll move for approval of item number 7.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, number 7.
All right, Mr. Chair, thank you. Christine, in regards to the application for 3-2 malt beverage license, I just need some clarification. To me malt liquor is stronger than 3-2. So I'm wondering why the application wouldn't just be for wine and strong beer?
Because there is no strong beer license. In the state's eyes, in order to make a strong beer license, you have to have a wine applica- a wine license from the county and a 3-2 license from the county. And together, those make a strong beer license in the state's eyes.
Interesting. So the wine application that's also on our dais, will that count then? Will that create a strong license?
No.
Okay, it'll just be for wine and just 3-2?
Well, it's, it's, having both of them creates a strong beer license. So they have their farm winery license, which is separate through the state. Then in order for them to serve strong beer through the county and the state, they need to have that wine application and the 3-2.
Okay. All right, makes sense, I guess. All right.
There's mud, right?
Yeah, there you go. I'll move for approval of item number 7.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Number 10. I pulled number 10 for clarification. I'm hoping Sheriff Heck is online. He is, great. Thank you. Under the informational background, it was $75 to house inmates. And I thought we, ours was at 80. So does the state set their own dollar amount per day?
Yes, so the state sets the dollar amount with us in this joint power agreement.
So regardless of wherever the inmates are housed, whether we choose 80 or up to 100, 125, it's still state mandated only $75.
So the, that figure that we set in our fee schedule, that's the figure that we charge other counties to house inmates with us?
Okay.
This would be, this would not be according to that fee schedule if we were to enter into the joint powers agreement. That's before you.
Okay.
It would be according to the $75 in the joint power.
Commissioner Benoit.
Troy, I just have a quick question on, I mean, do you know what it costs per day for inmate? For us to house them? What our cost is?
I don't have that figure at my disposal. I know that we calculated that in the past, but I would have to research that and get back to you.
Off the top of your head, would you say that that $75 per day covers our cost or not?
I believe it does. That's my recollection, and I can give you that concrete answer in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Troy? With that, I'll make a motion to approve number 10.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Beth, roll call, please.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next, Monty. We're gonna modify the agenda a little bit.
So would you like to proceed with the budget levy first?
Yes, please.
Okay. All righty. So I hope you've seen this on the screen, and I believe we're sharing the screen as well. So let's jump to the budget item here. All right. So, Mr. Chair, today's action represents consideration adoption of the, what's known as the proposed budget levy. So counties and cities are required to adopt what's, again, the proposed budget levy by the end of September. Our budget process started back in June with the development of the base budget. Worked with departments on their estimates for expenditures and revenues. Then the board held budget presentations back in August. And a recent budget committee of the whole to reach consensus on what you see here on this one-page summary. So I kind of like to use this one-page summary to talk about what's in the proposed budget levy. So we're looking at a 9.56% increase. And I'd like to pause there just for a moment. You may recall when we had the committee of the whole, I believe we landed on about a 9.7. And you see 9.56. The reason is, as you may recall, I went through a list of adjustments that occurred since we completed the budget book. And one of those I mentioned to you was the addition of the halftime position in the auditor treasurer's office, the technical analyst position. Well, I failed to remember that I had included that in the base budget. So when our starting point, I believe, was like 11.36, that included that halftime position. So we needed, we didn't need to add it again. So that's why instead of having a 9.7, you've got a 9.56. So that's actually was a good mistake. In the scheme of mistakes, that was a good one, so. All right. So looking at a 9.56% levy increase, 2.4 million from 2025. Our 10-year average levy increase is a 3.7%, 3.7% increase over 10 years. And that's, I'll show you the graph later. We heard from our assessor, Brian Foulton, that we're gonna see about 4.1% tax capacity increase in next year. So that helps to offset the effect of the levy increase to some extent. So we'll see our rate go from, go to 48.15%. That's up from 45.61. But we want to note that we're still down from a peak of 77.6% in 2014. So we're down substantially from when it peaked in 2014. Oftentimes, people want to know how the levy increase affects a median value house. And I get these numbers from our assessor. Our current median value is 267,000. On a median value house, this would result in a levy increase of $116 per year or $9.69 per month. And that's, I think folks often ask what's the effect on the median value house. So the operating budget, sometimes you see some sort of large increases and decreases. Oftentimes, it's driven by the road program. You know, as you've seen, we have, sometimes we have a really huge road program, sometimes it's smaller. And that can cause the operating budget to go up and down substantially. It's decreasing 1.1 million next year. And again, that's largely because of a smaller road program. The next thing down, Mr. Chair, are all the pieces that make up that 9.56% levy increase. You can see the largest portion is the new debt service on the government center project. Of course, the board authorized the issuance of HRA lease revenue debt over a 20-year period. And the first-year debt service levy that's required for that is 1.7 million. And then pretty much, Mr. Chair, what makes up the rest of the levy increase are what you've heard me say many times in past years. It's compensation and benefits. So 755,000 is a general wage adjustment for employees. Step increases, career ladder adjustments, that makes 729,000. I should note that step increases average about 3.2%. And as you, if you may recall, we have now in many instances with the purpose, these career ladders where folks can move up to a senior or to a 1 or 2 or 3. And that accounts for some of the cost in that particular item. We're gonna get a 3% health insurance funding increase as recommended by Marsh McLennan. That's 100,000, 105,000. Something new for 2026 is Minnesota paid leave is starting. And this budget assumes that the cost of that, the 0.88% premium on wages is shared 50/50 between employees and the county, 103,000. The board, recognizing we had, we have good reserves, decided to use some reserves to bring this levy increase down. So the board chose to use $500,000 of reserves to bring that levy increase down. We're gonna see some increased state aid for road maintenance, which is a great, great news. Helps reduce our levy costs. And then there's some other miscellaneous changes. So basically, Mr. Chair, the next item just explains what I just went through before. And the last bullet point talks about our fund balances. You know, we have good fund balances, they're not extravagant, they're solid. We're a little bit above where the state auditor recommends. The state auditor recommends you have fund balances equal to or greater than about five months of operating expenditures. At the end of 2004, we had 6.7 months of operating expenditure coverage in our general revenue fund. So that gave the board some flexibility to use some reserves to bring down the levy increase. So, Mr. Chair, the rest of this is just a bunch of spreadsheets and tables. And I did not intend to cover in detail. Maybe I will pause at the, the, yeah, I did mention this earlier. You see the 10-year, this is a 10-year graph showing the, the, red line is the levy. The green line is the tax rate. And you can see, this just goes back to 2017 when the tax rate was 66.01%. And this would put us at 48.15%. That's the green line. And, Mr. Chair, I believe that's all. This also shows the summary at the end of the, what we call our outside agencies, proposed funding for outside agencies. And we also include the capital improvement plan, which was discussed in the budget presentations. With that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have. And before you and your packet, there's two resolutions. One sets the levy and one sets the budget, again, proposed. This sets the maximum levy. The board can certainly reduce it between now and December.
Any questions from the board?
It's pretty much what we talked about on our call.
Okay, what would the board like to do with this? Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Jared, yep.
Just a question. I know that halftime position wasn't, or was put in there twice. You know, we can always take that out at the end in December. But what happens if we just leave that in for a buffer right now in case something came up for 40, you know, 40 grand between? And, yeah. We can always go down, we just can't go up.
Correct.
I'm fine either way, but I just want to throw it out there.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Kapinski, how would you want to list that?
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. Maybe we just stay as planned. Because it would, it would be, actually have to be listed as a buffer and that won't go over very well.
Right. I think we leave it as is.
Leave it as is, I agree.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I also, if I may, if I may note for you is that the board did have some policy issues from departments. And given consideration of the levy increase level this year, adding the new debt service, the board chose not to fund any policy issues. And I ain't tried to explain that to our departments, and I think they understood. It's just, this wasn't the year to add more positions. So wanted to mention that.
If we wanted to, we could put it in commissioner contingency. That seems to get used quite a bit.
Means I've gotta go grab a calculator and I gotta change a bunch of numbers in these resolutions. I'll do it.
Don't worry about it. I say, I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion.
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, so we need action first on the levy resolution and then the budget. The statute actually requires that sequence.
Correct. So the first motion should be a motion to approve the resolution setting proposed 2026 levy at 27,315,659.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I could, one more discussion item. Monty, just for clarification and to maybe share with people our discussion about why we're collecting levy dollars for the new debt service coming up in '26 already before the building's up? Maybe you could share with us?
Yeah, of course. The first interest payment is due actually next year. And I'm sorry, I don't recall off the top of my head what that is. But then, the first principal interest payment is due in February 27. And it's very typical when you issue debt is you want to make sure you've got the dollars in hand to pay that first principal interest payment that's due in February 27. So that's the sequence.
And the reason again is because we wouldn't have collected taxes until May of 27.
No, we wouldn't have, right. Until the first half, was it May of 27 and second half? Right. So that's very typical that you levy in that sequence, so you've got the dollars to make those debt service payments.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions? If not, roll call, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you. Carries. The second motion's a motion to approve the resolution establishing the proposed 2026 Benton County budget as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Let's, let's, Monty?
Can we just take care of the TNT item? And, Mr. Chair, all it requires is for you to make the announcement that's in the action requested section of that agenda. And it's simply just to make in the announcement, and then we put that into the record. That's all we're required statutorily to do.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, before you do that, are we intending to hold our regular board meeting that evening or just in the morning?
We have typically, yes. We've held the, we just moved the entire meeting to the evening. And that's been the practice for quite a long time now, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so the board chair, Benton County Board of Commissioners, will conduct a truth and taxation public meeting on Tuesday, December 2, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Benton County Board Room.
All right, we're good.
And that's all we need.
Yes, sir. Yep, that's all we need. Would you like to move now to Jim from Contiguity?
Actually, I would like to do the consider recommendation, being we have Commissioner Kapinski still online.
On the FFE?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, great. All right, let's see, let me see if I can get to that item. All right. Let's see here, FFE. All right. Okay. So first off, what is FFE? Furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And basically, Mr. Chair, in our entire project budget, it's roughly 25 million. There are, there are certain things that are described as owner items. And these are items which really most responsibility rests on us to arrange for the acquisition of these items. FFE is one of those. Another example would be technology, like screens and door control systems and cameras and so on and so forth. That's another owner item. I think there's another one for landscaping. And I know signage is an owner item. So it's important that we get started on this. It's gonna be a long process to acquire all this furniture. So what I did first is, and I think I mentioned to you, my plan was to meet with Evan and folks from Contiguity and bring back to you a plan to acquire FFE. So I did. So Jeff and I went over, we met with Evan and Pete and Jim, and were there and gave us some really great guidance on how to acquire FFE. I want to pause just for a moment and review exactly what is FFE. So it's many things that are obvious, enclosed office furniture, cube furniture, waiting room chairs and tables, conference room meeting and tables, meeting room tables, boardroom chairs, breakroom tables and chairs, community room appliances and so on, election equipment shelving, wellness room furnitures, and public health clinic equipment. So it's a lot of stuff, literally hundreds and hundreds of pieces of furniture. So this moves on then to a possible two paths to acquire FFE. One to be the sealed bid. And that is, for example, then we would have to develop an extremely detailed listing of every piece of furniture that we need, its dimensions, features, and so on and so forth. And then that would be put out to bid. And the consequence of that is you take the lowest bid. You take what that bidder proposes in terms of the kind of furniture. GLT identified another path, and they suggest we use the state contract path. And I want to pause there for a moment and mention to you, is when you use a state contract, you have satisfied the state statutory requirement to put things out to bid. That takes care of that requirement for competitive bidding when you use state contract. So GLT tells me what you could do is, is we can then, we can choose from various vendors that are on state contract. And then that vendor will come in and consult with us on all the kinds of furniture that we need. They can actually bring in samples of chairs, samples of materials and surfaces and finishes and so on. And then we can make really good decisions about what's the best kind of furniture for this building. And then, once those decisions have been made, the consultant then can tell us, okay, here's what it's gonna cost. And we can see, does this work within our budget? What Evan told me is that, let's just say, for example, you want some choices. And here's the example he used. He said, well, you'll have like a standard office arrangement, you know? You can't have, so there's lots of offices in this building. You can't have 20 different office configurations. You're probably gonna have more or less one standard configuration. But you could get options of that standard configuration at different cost levels. So that's one thing that you could look at, help kind of, you know, manage the costs. Look at options for different standard configurations. And I think the same thing applies for cubicles. So, let's see here. This moves on then to, I'll call this my recommended acquisition plan. So GLT would assist us in doing a, what they call a request for qualifications. So they send us RFQ out to all these companies that are on state contract. My proposal then is that GLT, Contiguity, Jeff and I would review these responses and recommend to, to meet with you all, and then you all would make that ultimate decision of which company we would go with. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the selected vendor would start consulting with the purpose on their specific furniture needs. Again, looking at different kinds of chairs, colors, textures, surfaces, and so on. And they present that total cost back to the board. And ultimately, I just want to make that clear, is you remain in control of this. In other words, the vendor comes back and says, here's our plan, here's our cost, and for you, it's a thumbs up or thumbs down. It's gotta work within the budget. So that's the general high-level overview of the plan. Again, Mr. Chair, I think what appeals, the appeal that I can see is the ability to make choices about what works in terms of, you know, the ideal kind of chair or desk or so on, and not simply have to take the low bid. And I guess I look at it this way. We're gonna be sitting on those chairs and using those tables and desks for a very long time. So we want to make some good choices going into it, some very well-thought-out choices. So that's a, that's a recommendation to all, Mr. Chair.
Monty, our intentions are to use some of our existing furniture and everything too, though.
Yes, sir. You know, and I think I tried to put that in here.
It was on number 6.
Vendor evaluates what existing furniture can be reused. And I, I think this really sort of tends to highlight the benefit of using this path. Because a vendor can come in and say, okay, let's take a look at what you have. Let's find out what can work. You think about, if we do this competitive bid process, we almost have to guess ourselves what can be reused. Well, maybe, well, maybe it can't. It depends if it can work with this vendor's furniture brand. We don't know. So I really like this idea because, again, they can come in and they can say, okay, well, you know, those sit stands that you all just purchased within the past few years, those can be reused, for sure. You know, we do have mostly newer, there is a lot of newer furniture in the annex area for auditor treasure and land services. And we would do our best to repurpose that furniture, especially the motorized sit stand kinds of desks, for sure. Wherever we can, where it makes sense. There's a lot of really old furniture in these buildings, though, so I'm not sure it makes sense to try and repurpose 30-year-old furniture in most cases.
So, Monty, what happens with the old furniture then, that we don't reuse?
You know, I haven't really thought that through. I think you could certainly try and, well, let me answer your question, answer your question sort of like, just sort of strictly speaking. When governments dispose of excess unneeded equipment, you must do so pursuant to an auction. So we could certainly attempt to auction it first, and that's probably would go that route. So you would have some big auction and attempt to sell it. I know a long time ago- I know a long time ago, we used to take stuff to Henry's and there would be auction there. We've used the online auction for things like squad cars and a few other items. So we probably would attempt an auction first. And if it doesn't sell at auction, then you can just essentially declare it junk. And, um, you could, for example, dispose of it for its scrap value, like, for example, anything that's metal, you could take to a metal recycler. So, but I think you try the auction route first. Yeah.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
When it comes down to the, uh, electronics and that whole package between the infrastructure cabling, the access control surveillance and audio video, there's, I, I agree, I used to, uh, we used to be on the state contract at one point, it's a two year contract with up to one, uh, three one year extensions. The only problem with that is, yeah, we might be, from, from a technology standpoint, limiting the people that can bid it locally, that are within our county, and from, and that would maybe probably be giving some good service to our buildings. Just a thought there, because I don't know who's on the contract anymore or anything like that, so I just don't. When it comes to technology, it's a little different because these people are going to be servicing, uh, doing updates, you know, uh, helping, helping Jeff and Steve manage the systems as their, as their, go through their lifespan. That's a little different than, uh, than the furniture where you pretty much buy and, and, and you go, they go away.
Yeah, I just want to add, Mister Chair, so, uh, this, of course, is very totally separate from technology. Our technology group is going to convene, I believe, next week and start to scope, yeah, to scope out a process for tech acquisition. So totally different, separate process. How we might break that apart and, and, and go, so, um, yeah, this is just, just the F F E.
Perfect. I just want to make a clarification there, and I'm not saying the state contract's bad on the technology either, because it gets bid by a lot of people. So that's why it meets the, 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 the state standard.
Sure, okay, Commissioner Benoit.
So, Monty, just for clarification, this is an item that was bid in initial contract?
No. No, that's, you kind of have the two buckets, you've got the, the twenty seven building contracts uh, that the board awarded, you know, a month and a half, two months ago. And I think that was around sixteen million dollars, if I'm remembering correctly. So that's, again, what's the work that's going on right now. And then below that line, you have, again, these so-called owner items. And again, F F E, technology, landscaping, those are separate. I mean, let's put it this way, it's all part of the overall project budget, and, uh, it's part of the financing plans, in other words, the debt that was issued can, can and will be used to help finance these items. So it's all part of that, it's not extra, it's not on top of, it's all part of that project budget, yeah.
That's the clarification I was looking for.
Thanks for asking, yeah.
I, I just want to make sure that we can refurbish, reuse a lot of stuff.
Makes total sense, Mister Chair, to do as much as we can to repurpose good furniture, sure, yep.
Okay.
So at this point, Mister Chair, I think what I'm just looking for is just a, a motion, if you could, if you're so inclined, to, uh, to approve this recommended F F E acquisition plan, and that starts G L T doing R F Q.
Okay, Board, what would you like to do?
Mister Chair, I'll make that motion, I think this is the smartest way to, to make sure that we could reuse the, uh, any furniture that, that still can be utilized, so I'll make that motion.
Mister, Mister Chair, just to clarify, Commissioner Kapinski, you're talking about the state contracts, sorry, I'll second it, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'll second it for the discussion, so you're, you're talking about the state contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So my second stands it.
Thanks for that clarification, Scott.
Okay, any other discussion on this? If not, we have a motion and a second, Beth, roll call.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Hyman.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you, passes. Next, Government Center Project.
Anything else you wanted, uh, how are you doing, Commissioner Kapinski, how you doing on time, anything else you want to move around? You good?
I'm good, keep rolling.
Okay, all right. Jim is here from Contagility.
All right. Did you need anything up here?
No, not this time, no.
Okay, let me just close this out.
Next time we will.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Jim Omen, I'm from Contagility Group, um, I'm the project manager that's managing the day to day operations of the construction, um, on the office side of things. So today we have just a brief update with our construction so far. Um, as you've all seen, we're in the midst of all the footings and foundations, which means that the vast majority of our site work, uh, phase is over. Currently, we're about twenty five percent, I would say, through footings and foundations, um, after which we would start steel erection, and that'll carry us, uh, a good, a good part into the winter. As you probably have heard, we ran into some soil, um, some contaminated soil issues. This was something that was, uh, partly expected. As we all know, that was the old Foley school there before. So when we were digging, we found, uh, contaminants, it was just largely, um, just shiny water, which obviously some sort of fuel, right? So we had a plan for this, and we had money in the budget for this in case this occurred. Originally, when we didn't know the scope of the soil contamination, we had almost a million dollars in the budget for this. But we did our due diligence on the front end, we did a lot of soil testing, a lot of soil borings and some test pits, and, and according to that, there was no contaminated soil. Knowing that we'd probably find something, we kept two hundred thousand dollars in the budget for that exact reason. And sure enough, we found it about, you know, between seven and twelve feet down, mostly in the center, uh, center of the site, and then back towards the far corner a little bit. Once we got it all out, it, and it came out to be fifteen hundred tons of material, which sounds like a big number, but, um, in terms of some of our more recent soil corrections we've had, it's, it's, it's a medium amount. It's not a horrendous issue. That fifteen hundred tons of material was shipped out, uh, to Vonco down in Becker. They have a process there by which they can have a certain cell that it all goes in, it gets profiled, it gets tested in a lab, so that it's all, you know, treated, treated to environmental standards and, and stored away there. We had testers on site, third party testers, to make sure that we're not taking out more than we need to, and we're not leaving in anything that we shouldn't. Um, and so those third party testers are here every day, watching what we were taking out, testing, I think every other truckload that went out, they would take a scoop and, and test it with their instruments and provide reports on that testing. So, um, it was pretty standard in terms of soil corrections. Uh, the tests came back that it was number one and number two fuel oil, and the difference between those, it's just a summer and a winter mix of fuel oil. So the, what we concluded is that there was a buried tank, um, that used to feed the boilers over at the school, and like all buried tanks from back in the day, it leaked its contents. The contaminants were confined to that, that one part of the site, and we're pretty confident that we got it all, we dug until we've got into fresh clean dirt on all sides of the hole. And we backfilled it in with, with clean granular fill. So, um, at the end of the day, we only spent about half of that two hundred thousand dollars that we allocated, I believe it was a hundred and eleven thousand was the final tally there. And the vast majority of that is the cost to remove and then truck down to Becker all of the contaminated soil. But also included in that is the testing, um, the lab work and the, the cost that Vonco has to store it. So that, all the costs altogether, it's about a hundred and ten, a hundred and eleven thousand of the two hundred thousand. So now that's done, um, we only lost two weeks of construction time from August twenty fifth through September fourth. And to be quite honest with you, a project of this size, we're going to gain and lose two weeks a bunch of times between now and the end. So I'm not worried about two weeks at all. So, uh, yeah, now we're on the footings and foundations, I think we have a good solid three more weeks of that, if the weather holds. I know the contractors are pretty excited about the forecast right now, we've got some beautiful weeks, a beautiful week ahead of us. Doesn't look like a lick of rain in the ten day, so we're looking to turn and burn as much of that footing and foundation as we can get done, in the next couple of weeks, take advantage of good weather before it turns. So with that, do you guys have any questions for me?
Mister Chair.
Yes.
Jim, were you aware of the Clean Bill of Health letter that we received from M P C A a number of years ago on that site?
Vaguely, yeah, I believe, uh, when they gave you that, they did thirty, I think it was thirty four test borings, and, or thirty four test locations, I think almost nine of those were test pits. This landed pretty much square, uh, in the middle of all of those.
Well, the reason I ask, because that particular contamination started back when that building was demolished, and it was with number six fuel oil, which basically was tar, I mean, it, it caused the whole demolition to come to a complete halt. And so that was located right at the center of the building too, and that's where the boiler room was.
Yep.
So I was just wondering how that tied in with how you perceive the Clean Bill of Health from M P C A? Because that is an item we talked at thoroughly before purchasing the property.
I looked over the, the soil boring reports myself, I think they were done in twenty twenty three. Um, I looked those all over myself, and they were all pretty much clean. And then I compared and overlaid that with where the extraction location was that we ran into, and I'm pretty positive that they did, made a good faith effort to find what they could, and they just missed it.
I guess, uh, what I'm specifically talking about is a Clean Bill of Health from M P C A back in approximately the year two thousand one. That was in the file, and so we received that, the school district at the time received that letter. And I was just wondering if you had any chance to cross reference that at all?
I guess not, not one from two thousand one, no, I, I looked at the two thousand three reports.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Piggybacking off of what Commissioner Johnson said, uh, I think what, what he's looking at is, I feel like it's a double edged sword here. We got a Clean Bill of Health which went to why we paid what we paid for the building, or the building site. And now all of a sudden, we get digging and the state can back away from what they originally said was good. And, and not only did we pay the, the price that we negotiated with the seller of the land, but now we put another hundred grand, hundred and ten grand into, uh, trucking out material they said was a Clean Bill of Health. Does that make sense?
Well, my recollection, Mister Chair, is that, not to belabor this issue, uh, but we had those, the communication, there's really dated stuff from M P C A, but there wasn't definitive or conclusive evidence that the site was in fact clean. If it was, we wouldn't have had Bronn come in and do test boring and test sticks. So we needed additional evidence and assurances that it was a, the cleanest possible site. So I, and I, and I know we shared that information with Bronn, and I think they reached the same conclusion, is that it didn't give us definitive guarantees that the site was in fact completely clean. It didn't, I, I recall that. So again, that led the board to say, look, okay, we want Bronn to come in and do a phase one and phase two. A phase one is a review of all the documentation, and you kind of go, that's first step. And you say, well, okay, is this conclusive evidence, yes or no? The answer was no, so that way proceeded to phase two, which actually was putting holes in the ground and, and doing test boring. And that was what Jim just referenced, was done in twenty three. And, uh, it's true, right, that they found very trace, trace, uh, existence of hydrocarbon in the, but it wasn't of, of concern. And I think Jim's right, they just didn't sink a hole where this ha- happened to be, so.
Monty, I stand corrected, you are a hundred percent right in the, in how this went. I completely forgot about the step that we did with, uh, the test drilling and everything.
Jim, I know we were a little bit worried about asbestos, we didn't find much though, did we?
We found, uh, I believe, one sample of A C M or asbestos containing material, and it was a bit of, uh, it was a hunk of pipe, if I remember correctly, it was ten or twelve feet long, that had some pipe wrap on it that contained asbestos. That was disposed of, um, according to M P C A standards as well. And testing was done on that to confirm A C M. So, but that was such a, I didn't mention that because that was such a small occurrence. We didn't find nearly as much, uh, chunks of asbestos as we feared we might. So that, that was pretty much a non-issue. That, that, uh, I should add, though, that the amount to mitigate that little bit of asbestos is also included in that hundred and ten, hundred and eleven thousand number I figured I mentioned.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Jim.
Yep, thank you for the update. Provide another month update in about a month's time, and, uh, we'll have, hopefully we'll have some pictures and some better stuff for you to look at that time, so.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next. Christine. Consider the sale of county owned parcels.
So before you is, um, two parcels that are currently county owned, one in Mendon Township and one in the city of Saint Cloud. I don't know if you've been able to review, do you have any questions? Questions?
Are you trying to get out of this or what? So anyway, let's just go through the first parcel, the Mendon Township one.
So that one was originally offered for auction by sealed bid in two thousand eighteen, it did not sell, no one bid on it, it was, has then been offered over the counter at the estimated market value of five thousand and has not sold. The estimated market value for assessment year two thousand twenty five was five thousand eight hundred. I had a discussion with Brian yesterday, he reviewed it, and he brought it to one thousand nine hundred for two thousand twenty six, because it is just a non-conformant, small wedge of property.
Great, thank you for that one, what about the next parcel?
Uh, the next one was tax forfeited in two thousand nine, it's in a development, um, just north of Cisco, off of Highway ten. It was sold at tax forfeit land auction in two thousand twelve, the individuals who purchased the property did not know about assessments that were on the property, which is eleven thousand five hundred twenty two dollars and twelve cents that is due to the city of Saint Cloud for water, main sewer, storm drain and surface improvements for the roads. So at that time, the county purchased the property back from the buyers and has been trying to sell it over the counter since two thousand twelve. The minimum bid price was previously set at ten thousand, plus the assessment of eleven thousand five twenty two twelve. The estimated market value for this year was twenty five thousand.
Commissioner Johnson?
Mister Chair, Christine, I realize these were, these came up long before you were here.
Yeah.
What's the, the process, um, are you, are you able to just put this out there whenever you have time? Have to come in from the board each time for it, how does that process work?
Well, this is county owned property, so that, this is different than the tax forfeited property. So this one, we would need to come before you and ask you to set the minimum bid price, yeah.
And did you say Brian changed the value on the first property to nineteen hundred?
Yes.
Yep. So I'm assuming that's probably what you're going to want for the first parcel then? Is to put a price, because you're wanting us to set the price, I'm assuming, correct?
You're going to set the minimum bid price.
Minimum bid price, okay.
So I know, um, when the first one was, um, offered at sealed bid, the minimum bid price was a dollar. And because of where it's located, it's, it's really only the people that own the property next to it would be the only ones interested in it. And apparently he had some emergency that happened that day, and he ended up not being able to bid on it.
Okay.
And we haven't had anything since then.
Okay, Commissioner Benoit?
This is not a, that, that first one is not a buildable site.
No, no.
No, no.
Point eleven.
Yeah.
Right.
Of an acre.
Right, yeah.
More, someone wants to put a billboard or something on it, kind of.
Sure.
And so it's located directly north of the Joy Christian Center, off of Highway twenty three, so, well, it's on Quebecore Road, which is north of the Christian Center.
Okay, so previously on this site, we put a minimum bid of one dollar on it before, correct? Okay. Let's take these individuals individually. What would we like to do with the first parcel for a minimum bid? Board?
Thinking.
I know you're thinking, Commissioner Johnson. You know, the last time the minimum bid was one dollar. It's valid at nineteen hundred though, so what do you want to do with it? Anybody?
Keep it at a dollar?
Would that be your motion?
I would do a motion.
Okay.
I mean, it didn't sell the first time, right?
Correct, yep. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion, Commissioner Johnson. I know you're still thinking about that.
I don't like the dollar specifically, but it is what it is. It hasn't moved. It hasn't had any activity on it. So a- again, we don't have to accept it at the end of the day, I would imagine, what the bids are.
If they meet that dollar, don't we have to? Because we put that minimum.
Yes.
That to me is just the minimum though, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just a minimum. The idea is hopefully both parcels, one on each side, would try to figure out who's gonna want it.
Not doing us any good.
No.
The whole point of it is to get it back on the tax roll, right?
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that for the minimum bid of a dollar on the first parcel? Parcel number zero nine point zero zero five four one point zero three. Any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Benoit?
Yeah.
Commissioner Heinem? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Passes. What do you want to do with the next minimum bid for parcel seventeen point zero one five five three point zero zero?
What was the last minimum, Christine?
The last minimum was ten thousand plus the eleven thousand dollar assessment on it. Um, this parcel is buildable, but it's a very weird shape that, because there's wetland in it.
Right.
So we reached out to the um C- City of Saint Cloud and they drew a area. It's a wedge that could be built on. So again, it's not not a real desirable.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So, so I remember Christine back, I think during the Great Recession. There were lots in a, in a different city that had a fair, fairly large special assessments attached to them. And the city was willing to reduce those to make them more attractive for sale. Is there any possibility the city would have any interest of reducing the assessments?
We already tried that. They are not.
And it was a hard no.
Yeah.
Thanks for asking.
So that means our minimum bid should include the uh special assessment then, at that time. Because they're not willing to reduce at City of Saint Cloud. Correct or not?
So I, no, I believe it's the minimum bid and then plus the special assessments.
Commissioner Johnson?
Mister Chair, so did Brian adjust his estimated market value of this property at all?
He did not.
I'll move to have the minimum bid at ten thousand dollars in addition to the sales price of eleven thousand five twenty-two twelve of special assessments that must be paid at the time of purchase also.
Okay, we got a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion and, yep, okay, Christine?
Can I say something? Um, so this has been for sale over the counter on our website at that price and has not sold.
For how long has that been on?
Since twenty twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah.
Okay, Christine, what's your recommendation then?
I don't have a recommendation.
My, my issue with it is he hasn't, he hasn't dropped the estimated market value of twenty-five grand at all, so.
Right.
Uh, we're already fifteen grand under the estimated market value. It has assessments on it. I understand that.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benoit?
To get it back on the tax roll and hopefully somebody builds a house and puts it back on the tax roll?
Sure.
That's the intentions. Monty?
May I ask Christine a question? So Christine, after many attempts to sell this through these means, is it possible for counties to list property with a Realtor? Is that, is that permissible at, once you've exhausted and you've tried your best to sell it through an auction process, can you list it with a Realtor?
That I would have to check into.
I guess my thought there, it might be worth exploring because to give this more exposure. Cause see, right now, it's not listed on the MLS and you have to, you have to be looking at our website to see it or see a social media posting. So I guess my, it's getting very limited exposure. But if it was on, you know, the searchable Realtor dot com, you would actually see it then.
I would assume there would be a cost to the county at that point then, because right now what we're planning on doing is the public surplus.
Well, I guess my thought is we can keep trying and doing the same thing over and over again and and expect different results, or we can try something different, you know? So.
I like that idea, Monty. I'm gonna rescind my motion and table this uh until our next meeting and we get an answer back from the County Treasurer.
Yeah.
And I'll rescind my second to, to.
Okay. Okay, we'll table this parcel until the next meeting.
Okay.
Until we can gather further information. Okay, anything else, Christine?
Nope, that's all I had.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Chris? All right, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just allow me a moment. I always like to bring things up on the screen, so we're all.
I think I still see your screens, you may, I just let you know that, so.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, that way those playing bingo at home can follow along. Um, all right, let's see. My first item is to consider the bids for project SP zero zero five dash zero nine zero dash zero zero five. This is the railroad crossing, the pedestrian railroad crossing in Rice. So we opened bids on September fifth and all the bids came in higher than the engineer's estimate, almost by double. So we received three bids. All, all were responsible bids and followed all the bidding instructions. But the lowest bid of Tyzak Concrete LLC was uh two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And for this portion of the project, uh, the engineer was estimating uh just about a hundred and three thousand dollars. So this was considered at the Rice City Council meeting last week and they voted not to move forward with the project. So that would be my recommendation to the county board is not to move forward with the project. Reject all bids at this point and then talking with their engineer, what we would do is reconsider uh re-advertising uh later this fall and maybe have a winter bid opening. One of the things that we think, or a couple of reasons why we think bids came in high is the compressed timeline. Uh, that was one of it, uh, and and working with the railroad. So because you're working with the railroad, there's railroad liability insurance that you are forced to buy and and you buy it from BNSF. You don't get to shop for your own. Uh, then you pay for a railroad flagger to tell you when a train's coming and you need to clear the track. And so those costs aren't broken out. They were just incidental to other items. So bidders had to, had to include those costs with, with other items, you know, the concrete sidewalk pavement uh and earthwork and stuff. So we may reconsider breaking that out as a separate bid item and have the, the bidders bid that. Another reason why I think uh Rice chose not to move forward with this because they are receiving a transportation alternatives grant that's capped um at the, at that grant award amount. Anything additional would be on the city. And so it would, it would amount to about another hundred thousand dollars of costs that the city would have to come up with to, to, if these bids were awarded.
Mister Chair, Chris, do they, are we subject or are they subject to losing that grant if they don't act on this?
I, I've been in contact with uh Min dot State Aid, um, and and we don't think so. As long as we don't let it sit for too long, that's why we think this, a winter bid opening would be advisable. Um, and and we should be able to, well, we can keep the grant amount for them, so we'll just rebid it. Um, and then it would be a, a twenty twenty-six construction as opposed to a fall of twenty twenty-five construction project.
Mister Chair, I'm gonna move to reject the bids and re-advertise uh the county engineers and the city of Rice's timeline in the future.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? Beth, roll call.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Okay, Chris, move on.
Very good. We will, I will continue working with the city of Rice and their engineer uh to get that re-advertized and keep you informed of that progress. The next item is the consideration of bids for project SP zero zero five dash zero seven zero dash zero one four. Now, this is our roundabout project at Mayhew Lake Road and Cassaw twenty-nine. So we opened bids on September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we received uh we received quite several bids. So uh, seven, six bids here. The lowest responsible bidder was Knife River uh North Central Division. But they are two point seven percent above our estimate. So prices came in a little bit higher than what we were recommending, but um, so six bids there. The highest bid was a hundred and sixteen percent of our bid, or sixteen percent over our estimate. So that being said, it is my recommendation to go ahead and move forward with this. We've got a lot of things that are riding on this to get this project done. Uh, two point seven percent, so overall, um, that is seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars over our estimate. This bid also includes city utilities as a portion of that. So the county's portion of this project will come to two million, six hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and three cents. That portion is fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents over what we were estimating. One of the things you may be wondering is what, what drove to be over? And and really, the biggest thing was uh the bituminous pavement. Uh, I have that here. So we were estimating uh bituminous pavement to come in at seventy dollars a ton. Uh, all the bids came in at a hundred and eight dollars a ton or higher. So bituminous prices seem to be going up. Those bitu- those really good bituminous prices we got earlier this year, we don't, we don't have that, that now, so. There could be a lot of reasons why, uh, just crude oil prices. Uh, the fact that a lot of that bituminous construction is gonna incur next summer, that could be part of it as well. But that was the, that was probably the biggest driving factor. We had a lot of things that were over. We had a lot of things that were under our estimate. Uh, but that item right there was uh a hundred thousand dollars over what we were estimating. But once again, overall, the project is seventy-six thousand dollars over our estimate. Just to recap though, this project uh is receiving federal funds. So all said and done, I have that uh here, we're receiving one million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars of uh H-SIP money. And we've got, we got what was called a carbon reduction program grant as well. That was only four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So the remainder, anything above that one point nine million dollars uh will be local option sales tax or sales tax for transportation will be going towards this, the construction of this project. Because of those two funding sources, that's why it's my engineer's recommendation is to go ahead and award this construction contract. If it is awarded, this fall, we will proceed with constructing the bypass road so that next summer, it was written into the bidding specs that the Monday after school uh is done next spring, we're closing that intersection down. And um, come H or high water, we're opening that intersection back up before Labor Day weekend. So it's open for school in the fall of twenty twenty-six, so.
Uh, Chris, this, you said this includes the cost for the city utilities?
Yeah.
City responsible for that?
That, that's right. The city is responsible for the relocation of their sewer and water lines underneath that intersection, so.
Okay.
Mister Chair, uh, Chris, do you recall, I was trying to remember back when we did our five-year road plan. Uh, did you have estimate in local option sales tax for this road to help with offsetting this? I, I just don't remember that dollar amount in there. Do you happen to remember?
Uh, I do not remember that. What I do know is that in the five-year plan though, the total construction cost was estimated to be about three million dollars.
Right.
So of just the county's costs, so um, uh, I don't, although I don't recall the specific sales tax amount. Our official estimate when we got all said and done with the plans is a little bit less. So conceivably, we're using less sales tax than when we adopted the five-year plan.
Yeah, okay.
Even though it's over our estimate, um, we could be using a little bit less, so.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be the difference between um, two million, six hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and one million, nine hundred and forty thousand. So I didn't do that math real quick.
Okay.
Okay, it's about seven hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Dollars.
I'll make a motion to uh, 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 for project SP zero zero five, zero seven zero, zero one four.
To accept a.
To accept a bid.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Chris?
I just wanted, for clarification, make sure the, the resolution, or the, the, the motion includes authorizing the board chair to sign the resolution, awarding that. I do need to add that it is contingent upon the Min dot Office of Civil Rights and Compliance was with the disadvantaged business enterprise uh program. There is a seven point five percent DBE goal, meaning seven of work equivalent to seven point five percent of the value is performed by disadvantaged business enterprises. So that office is reviewing those submittals by the contractor right now. I was hoping that we'd have them by today, but we, we do not, so.
I will include that in my, um, motion.
My second's fine too.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinem? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Okay, Commissioner Kapinski, you have to leave now?
I'm gonna be stepping away, so I do apologize.
Okay, thank you for your time this morning. Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, thank you. Have a good day.
Okay, next, Chris?
All right, uh, the next item is a, a discussion item and maybe a consensus. Uh, I know today is a, is an important meeting where the preliminary levy uh was established. Uh, just, just for record, there was no increases into the highway department of levy for engineering services. So I think, I would like to continue discussion on the need for hiring outside engineering services to make sure we complete our five-year plan. And this is where it gets tricky, you know? We, we do an annual budget and we're looking at twenty twenty-six budget. But as an engineer, we're looking at projects that are twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty. Some of those projects require engineering and planning work now, just with all the regulatory review and approvals uh, uh, and stuff. It requires a multi-year process before we get to construction, then throw in bats where we have to be clearing trees over a year in advance so that utilities can get out of the way the summer before we're gonna construct it. So that backs up our engineering. We almost have to have the engineering done almost two years sometimes before uh we do construction. So this, this document here um is our five-year plan, kind of truncated and color-coded of all the projects here. So over the five years, this is essentially the list of all the, the road and bridge construction projects that we are expected to, to deliver. And and when I say deliver, that year that's listed is the year of construction. What we see on the screen here, in green, are projects that we plan on designing in-house and therefore we would also inspect it in-house with our engineering technician staff. We have three engineering technicians. Um, and so, simple terms, you could expect, well, three construction projects a year could be inspected by in-house staff. But we, we do some things to, to kind of cheat, cheat that, I shouldn't use the word cheat, to maximize our availability. Where we will, we will tie projects together as it's called. So if they're projects of similar scope, let's say all the overlay projects, we'll tie them into one construction project. So therefore, we have some governance over the contractor's schedule and we can uh assign one inspector to that project. If we had let those all separately, it's conceivable we would have multiple contractors. And if those schedules overlap, we wouldn't be able to, to staff it. So we do things like that. The projects in pink here are projects that we would uh need to use consultant design and consultant to inspect. And immediately in twenty twenty-six, there's two projects and these are bridge projects. So what's interesting is the twelve and thirteen bridge projects, we had budget in the current year for the consultant design of those. Bridge design is kind of a special specialty uh aspect of engineering, which we don't have that expertise in-house. So we've always consulted that out. And likewise, the inspection of those uh
His team.
We would need some, that, that same expertise to inspect it. In Minnesota though, we use the bridge, the term bridge to refer to any structure that has a span of ten feet or greater. Up until this current year, a lot of our bridge replacement projects have been just box culverts. Where we have been fortunate to inspect those construction projects with. Where we have been fortunate to inspect those construction projects with our in-house staff. We're getting into a period of time where the bridges we're replacing now are actual bridge structures, more of a traditional bridge structure that you would imagine. On driven piles and piers with bridge beams that span the stream or water. And so those are, those are more complicated and would require, um, that, that higher level of expertise from a consultant. Then you see some projects in blue, which would be projects that we intend to, or we would probably need to use a consultant to perform all the engineering and final engineering work. But we would have the full intentions that we would can inspect those with our in-house inspection staff. And for an example there, the 2027 construction project at Cassa 2, here's the reality of that. We've been working on engineering on that for two to three years already. We have budget currently to, to do engineering. It's anticipated though, that engineering contract will go into 2026. Um, and so we would need some engineering budget for that in 2026. But we would, we would inspect it with our, uh, one of our three engineering techs, um, in-house. We're hoping, so you see a couple more bridges here? Once again, higher level of expertise, but by 2027, um, although we may need to use the consultant to design those. We're anticipating that we will have one or two of our engineering technicians through the, the proper classes and training. And they would be ready to inspect that i- in-house. There's, there comes into, to some more projects here, that's, yeah, that's, that's the blue color, right? Consultant inspection, um, uh, inspect in-house. We got some more pink in 2028. We, we try to manage our workload and that's basically because in 2028, all these projects, we just think that we would be over capacity. The volume of work to deliver in 2028 would be greater than what our in-house inspectors. So we would possibly need to use consultant design and inspection in 2028. Because our inspectors will be inspecting all these other projects that same construction year. Uh, likewise, i- in the later years as well. So we've got some in-house di, inspection, but we may need some outside help, uh, with inspection as well. This, this kind of pinkish color here is one that we're, we're, uh, unsure of yet. So, um, most likely would need to use some, uh, oh, this is the big one, this is the Mahew Lake Road. If we're constructing that big project all the way from Highway 23 up to 29, we're hoping in five years from now, we would have, we're gonna have the Rockstar technician staff in-house. And they will be able to inspect that, uh, big project in-house. The reality of it is, we need to be doing the engineering and planning of that right now. So, um, that's a big one that we would need some budget for outside help. This document also, these, these square boxes, um, are projects that are in the current, um, five-year plan to use local option sales tax. And why I think that's significant is, um, we've had some discussions, up till now, we've, we've been using levy for engineering services. Whether it's to pay for in-house staff or hire outside consultants. It does seem feasible that maybe if we've identified the road construction portion to be funded with local sales tax. Maybe we need to consider funding the engineering portion of that project with sales tax as well. Good and bad, the problem is, only these projects with the, the thick border around them are ones that are identified on our current sales tax list. So that's the discussion that we should continue to have, I believe, is, first of all, do we want to use some of the sales tax proceeds to pay for the engineering portion? The downside of that is, uh, maybe that makes a little less sales tax available for the actual construction costs. The plus side is, well, we're not having to use levy for those engineering costs. And I would propose, if we're gonna consider that, consider it for reimbursing in-house staff as well. If we have an in-house technician inspecting a sales tax project, maybe there should be some levy offset from the sales tax for that as well. The other thing is, there's a lot of projects on here that are not identified on the sales tax list that could be maybe up for consideration. Um, we've mentioned it before, to add it to that sales tax list would require a public hearing and a new resolution adopted.
Mister Chair, Chris, um, I know that the projects would take the public hearing, but does the change of funding using local option sales tax towards engineering? Public hearing also, or is that something the board can decide?
I believe the board can decide, um, 'cause we would make a statement, maybe we make a policy statement, that the engineering is necessary to complete the capital improvement of this project. Um, and what I'm finding is, a lot of counterpart, my counterparts across the state have already been doing this. They've been using the sales tax for, for the engineering portion. So, if it's already on the list, I feel like we could, uh, I'm confident that we could make that policy statement that we're gonna use the sales tax to, to pay for the engineering.
I guess the other plus is, we're receiving approximately double on our local option sales tax than we expected?
Yeah, we are starting to see some actually leveling out now, so we're about $3.8 million a year sales tax. And that original study before we adopted it was estimating at 1.9 million per year.
So we're leveling it off at 3.8?
Yeah.
Good and bad. I, I guess the only question I have is, I just wanna make sure that it's, we, we can legally use House Sense Tax, you know, for the engineering portion of it.
Yeah, good question. As an engineer, I say you can't have one without the other, so, um.
And Mister Chair, Chris, just to clarify on, on the agenda item, looking at estimated cost of 1.3 million.
Yeah.
That's over the five-year road project plan?
Well, that would, actually, that would be engineering just for, uh, next year.
Just for 26?
Oh, 2026, yeah.
What was in your consulting budget for 26?
So what, what it got approved is about 200 and some thousand dollars.
So, do we have to do the difference or in addition to?
Well, it would be the difference between what was just adopted as a preliminary today and 1.3 million, so it's maybe 1.1.
Additional 1.1 roughly?
And, and I can tell you confidently, a big portion of that engineering cost is this big Mahew Lake Road project that we're, we're pursuing all sources of funding for. But as an engineer, I feel like we, we keep getting some questions that I can't effectively answer until we've get some engineering, more engineering out of the way. We have done some preliminary planning, we have some concepts drawn, um, hate to tell you this, but Excel Energy is gonna be, be a big thorn in our side on that Mahew Lake Road project. So we need to get some engineering done. And so that one mil, nearly $1 million of that, 1.3, is for engineering on this Mahew Lake Road of, uh, an $18 million project.
So every time we go for funding at the state, and Commissioner Johnson, you were in DC, they've always asked us, how far are we with this process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and when we told them we've never started the engineering yet, pretty soon, they looked a little differently at the project. Uh, I think unfortunately, it's, it's a huge expense, but in order to capitalize on funding, we have to do this. I mean, correct, Chris? Would that be your opinion too?
Yeah, e- even for the construction costs, I think it may behoove us to consider adding that to the sales tax. That's another thing that always gets asked too, is what other funding sources do we look at?
Yep.
And, and I think at the state level, when they see, oh, Benton County has sales tax, but then we have to say, oh yeah, but we didn't identify any sales tax for this project.
Project.
That, that may help us to say that, once again, it doesn't seem like if the state or federal wants to be the sole source of funding, they wanna help out. Knowing that you've got some other funding to, to match it and stuff. It may help us on, on raise grants, may help us on, uh, federal congressally delegated spending.
And, and that's correct, Chris. Every time I've been in front of, you know, down at St. Paul, the first thing they ask us, what other type of funding options are you going for or have?
Mm-hmm.
And, and Commissioner Johnson, you were in DC, you know, anything brought up about that too or not?
It's the same question, you know, they wanna know.
Yeah.
Where the funding sources are coming from. I, I just need to make sure I'm, get my head wrapped around this, so an estimated cost of 1.3 million, you've had 200 grand stuck in your budget, so we're looking at 1.3, 1.1 million? Plus or minus in addition to what we preliminarily set already today?
Uh, yeah.
Or use local option sales tax dollars?
Yes.
And if we use local option sales tax dollars and receive other types of funding, I would assume then we could potentially reimburse local option sales tax?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's the thing, the, like at the state level, for a bonding bill, it's all on how that bill gets worded. The draft, or the bills that got introduced last year, a, at the state, the House File and Senate File, did include language that included engineering costs. Well, here we are, a whole year later, no funding there. So, um, yeah, that could, like, for, at least at the state bonding level, we could include language that says that that money includes covering engineering costs. The problem is, yeah, we need to do, we gotta get some of that done before we get the funding.
But to approve 1.1 million in addition now is another four and a half percent.
Or it comes off half sun sales tax.
Or it comes out of.
That's, you know, that's, I know, we're both looking together.
The other problem is, we've already approved the proposed budget, so we can't really raise.
Can't do that, no.
Can't raise it.
No. So we're only stuck.
We're stuck with local, local option sales tax, kind of.
That's the only option we have.
The thing is, is you wouldn't necessarily be using the whole 1.1 million right away.
Uh, no, um, yeah, I guess that's conceivable, so, um, a, and it comes down to scope too. This, this big project, I think we've all recognized, yeah, $18 million of construction costs, that's a big a- animal. Maybe we say, okay, we're not gonna do engineering for the whole length from 20.